All right, why don't we get started with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to just take a minute before we get into our agenda and open up comments, just to acknowledge that we had an opportunity to honor a former board member, Ted Manazza, this afternoon and celebrate his life. He passed away last week. And he served with many of us and served on the school board for over 29 years, which is a phenomenal record. I know he was a great mentor to me when I came onto the board about eight years ago, and I think we all have very fond memories of him. I wanted to honor him with a statement in a language that I know that he supported continuing in our school and I know was near and dear to him over the years. So if you'll forgive my pronunciation, I'll say it and I'll translate it and then we'll please have a moment of silence. Amicam nostrum et collegam honoramus prompte multos anos ministeri societate nostre erat vir magna humilitate ichae integritate. And the way that translates is, we honor our friend and colleague for his many years of service to our community. He will be remembered as a man of great humility and integrity. If we could take a moment of silence for Ted. Thank you. All right, we'll open up our meeting and somewhat appropriate that we're actually having a meeting on the day that we celebrated Ted's passing, but he would appreciate that we're doing, continuing his work. Any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to any amendments to the agenda, David?
Just that we're going to move that order of the number eight around to have nutritional services first in that group.
Okay, great. All right, and we have an update on the status of the methadone clinic.
Mm-hmm. So again, as I have indicated before, our appeal continues to remain active. They are open, which again, I've reported before. A recent update however, is that they are up to currently serving 300 folks at the present time. That doesn't mean that it's 300 every morning or afternoon or, you know, any, it's again just total clients that are currently being served at this point on caseload. Again, that was through a conversation with Todd Sennepair. And in addition, both parties have moved for summary judgment, so we've put questions forward and we're awaiting the court's decision on those particular appeals. And that's what I have currently with the methadone clinic. I don't know if the board has any specific questions to that.
Just can we get a quick update on the practices that are currently in place?
Yep.
That we, I know we started and some may or may not be continuing?
Right. So as you know, we moved our facilities department that was located on the south side of the high school. We moved them to 400 Dorset, which is the small house located now in the northwest corner of our property. It's blue house. We will be having a sign there. Our security officer is also located there. So we have a lot more attention to that particular corner intersection. We have our security person on a regular route traffic. Currently, he does have a vehicle, a small vehicle, that he patrols essentially the property. And we have some different routes in which he does. And he is checking in with the high school and the middle school property and basically filling out, you know, checking off a checklist that, and initials and times so that we have record of what's going on. In addition, we've added lighting along the north side of the middle school. We're about to add, I don't think that's yet complete, John, on the west side of the middle school, some additional lighting.
Yes, and Green Mountain Powers putting something.
Yeah, and so Green Mountain Powers putting additional lighting in along the north side, also street lighting along the side. We've thinned out most of the dead debris out of the woods that is between us and the north side parking lot, as well as the west side. In addition to that, again, protocols and procedures have been, you know, articulated with the administrators and then to the staff and folks. A safety letter has gone out. Cameras, there's been no change to the cameras. We've looked at some different things around cameras and coverage and we're still looking at that. And again, I'll have information for the board around some of the costs that have, we've incurred as a result of that. Am I missing anything, John, that you can think of?
There was, there was a question about the appropriateness of taking dead trees down from the woods. And we've settled that with the city. And we have a few more trees that are not, should be down, and so we're going to continue that. We work with the city arborist and according to the city rules, and we were fine.
Initially, there was a little bit of concern on that, so you may have heard a little rumbling about that. We were taking down dead trees, but the understanding that some folks thought is that we had to have a replanting schedule for taking a dead tree down. And so that would have been very costly for us, and so we have clarified that.
Good. And have we had any word on the community-based advisory group that the Howard Center had discussed at one point?
No, I have not heard anything. Again, I do expect to meet with Todd. I thought I probably would by now, but I know that is something that they've indicated to us, both publicly and to me through email, so I have no update on that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to, I see we don't have our student representative tonight, so we will forego our student representative report.
Mm-hmm.
And move on to the superintendent's report.
So again, in front of you, I've kind of tried to capture some things that I felt were important to note. Obviously, folks have heard a lot about calendar 2.0 coming and going. We, I was actually at two of the forums. And what you have in front of you essentially just provides clarity around where we are with the calendar. I think the forums, our initial desire was to create and think about effective change, again, from my fellow superintendents. We were a little short-sighted in our thinking about what I would say change. I think it was important that our forums remained on, although the movement of a change calendar, 2.0 for next year, was certainly something that we were not hearing was going to be supported. Through the forums however, a lot of positive feedback has come back to us as a result of other really critical areas of change. So next week, actually while we're down at the VSA, VSBA meeting, there'll be a meeting of the superintendents from Chittenden County to talk about what were the takeaways, what's kind of the next step, and how can we communicate back to the folks that were part of the forums and others to indicate our appreciation for the feedback and the desire to continue and enhance and transform education. So important to note here is that 2.0, as it's been published, is not going to happen in 1415. The F-35s, again, last meeting, the board directed me as a result to kind of reach out to the air guard and find out, I know, more about noise mitigation, flight time, et cetera. I have talked with the individual, Colonel Joel Clark, but I don't have a meeting yet. We were playing phone tag a little bit. I've talked to him in person, but we didn't get to the calendar. We just, he wasn't prepared or I wasn't prepared to do that. So very open to do it, and I expect that to happen within the next couple of weeks.
David, I hope that that discussion will be broader than just F-35, because if there's an issue with noise, it doesn't matter where it comes from.
Yeah.
It's a matter of its intensity, its frequency spectrum.
That's right.
Not its source.
I think, you know, from the F-35 perspective, you know, and my approach is with, in this case, the air guard. But I think you're absolutely right, Dan. You know, flight pattern, flight times, noise mitigation, which is not just the air guard or military traffic, it's all traffic. And I think it would be advantageous through, you know, our outreach for me to connect with the airport management to say, help me to understand, you know, what goes on. I happen to know a fair amount about, you know, when you can and when you can't, but I don't know who sets those rules, when those rules set. So I mean, I have some, you know, need to understand that. But I definitely hear you that it's not just, you know, military traffic, or in this case, that's right.
Not just specifically the F-35.
Yep. Student assessments, again, I shared with you a little bit last time. Currently, it's a distraction to instruction at the high school particularly. All of the proctoring that has to go on to have the right-sized sections for kids to be tested is really a challenge. I think they've been working hard to try to look at how to do this as efficiently as possible with other types of assessments that might need to be done as well. So again, mindful of that. I think the other part is how do we get information out? So I'm going to tack on kind of the, you know, AP exams, which aren't in here, but how can we get on our calendar information really clearly early so moms and dads can make plans accordingly? And again, Stuart and the administrative team and I talked about this. And again, there is a desire for us to figure out how to be more efficient with electronic calendar sharing, you know, coordinated information, so we're going to continue that.
Good question, David. Would the S-Back be any better, like, it's really difficult with the kneecap. Will the S-Back be easier to administer in any way? Won't that be computerized?
It is, it is expected to be computerized, and we were, we initially put out that we would be interested in being part of the pilot, but again, the selection for that, you know, was pretty small. The idea definitely is to have electronic. I think we're well positioned to be able to do that. As far as the timing and the amount of distraction to instruction, I don't see that that going, you know, going away. It is, when you look at these amounts of time, it does take away from classroom instruction.
And how far in advance are those test dates set?
They give us the window. Do you know, Stuart, when we've got the window this year?
The dates were set in late May. And actually, the calendar at the high school listed the dates for the kneecaps in August, if you go to their detailed calendar. But it didn't specify the partial days. It just said it was a kneecap test. Those are the kinds of pieces that we just have to make sure is there.
It was not on the district calendar though, and it should be.
That's right. And that's part of the roll-up is that, you know, we have the electronic means to roll up, you know, a calendar share. The problem is, is it can become almost too granular in some ways. I mean, I'm not saying that is too small of a grain size, but it's, how much do we put on there? What's really, I think, going to be important is that if I'm a mom and a dad of, you know, a third grader and a sixth grader, how can I make sure that I'm being informed through an RSS feed or whatever the case may be, so I'm informed of that information? Nonetheless, we have work to do to try to really hone in on how best to, you know, to get this information coordinated and informed. The We Belong program, again, I gave you that update. We've had one training. We're still doing a little bit of some work around our district steering group, and so I have a few more folks that I want to talk to a little bit, but we have some training that's going to start. We've had one kind of introductory. So again, I think this is really important for our work in continuing to look at diversity, inclusion, and equity for all, and I'm excited for some of the dialogue and discussions that are currently happening and our work, so I'll keep you posted on that as well. Again, the superintendent/business office, I'm just letting you know, again, this is just an idea that the city management has had around the National Gardening Center, which is located just on the south side of the entrance to Carnes Arena. Actually, it's not the first house, it's actually the second. The first one's really not too good-looking. But it is, it is where the National Gardening Association was. And Kevin Dorn approached me and said, you know, would you be interested in this? And so it's really just interest-based. I've had a few folks take a look at it. I've had some IT folks, Steve Walker. I've had John Stewart and our facility folks take a tour of that. What I've not done and what we need to do are in the process of getting to understand what the total cost implication would be if we were to move. So anyway, that's, for me, I think there's a longer, there's a longer-range plan here that connects to opportunities for students, master planning and visioning connected to the city, you know, capital improvement plan, et cetera. But it's worth an option to look at right now. I just don't want you to, I mean, it's out there because we've visited it, and I think it's appropriate that the board know. Again, there's been no arrangement. There's been no deals made or anything of that nature. Just we're in discussion.
What would be the advantage, David, to moving off-site like that?
Well, there's a couple of things. You know, our district offices have never been together. Used to be the superintendent's office, as you know, was upstairs in the high school, where big picture is. There was four, five of us there. The business office and IT were downstairs, where they are currently, and special education folks and curriculum were over here. There is some opportunity, I think, to see some, what I would say, efficiencies to happen and better communication, opportunities really to look at ourselves in a better way. I also think, as much as I enjoy and think it's really great to be connected to the students and the kind of day-to-day operations, I think every space is an important space for students to be able to, and teachers to make some decisions around how we can continue to connect and engage students. So at the high school, big picture would have never happened had we not moved, for instance. Certainly wouldn't have happened at the high school. Again, part of this is definitely connected to enrollment and enrollment projections, but I think in, you know, that's something certainly that, you know, I want to, I want to, you know, continue to weigh out, so.
It's hard to imagine how you can add space without adding cost.
Yeah.
So the question is, what's the benefit going to be?
That's right. And I owe that to you. There's some things that need to happen here in the next, I'm going to say, in the next month, and you'll be hearing some of those first phases. And again, first, you know, you, the board, and obviously the administrators and myself around ideas around where we're going to move forward and why that may make more sense to you. And the AP exams, I already talked about that. Again, communication with moms and dads, that has happened now, is that correct, Stuart? Not yet? A letter is due to go out to the parents about the paying for the AP exams. And again, that is consistent with what we did last year. We did, it was a charge. Again, it shows up in the fundraising and collection form. You see where the money comes in that way, and so it is certainly a cost to our parents and guardians. And definitely, I would say this is the same thing. I know, how do we, how do we get out that communication on expectations? And I hear, you know, that maybe moms and dads might not have had their kids participate in that. Again, the test is not mandatory. When we were paying for it, it was mandatory. Now it's not mandatory. If they want to take it, however, they do need to pay for it. So I anticipate it should be out in the next, within the next five to six days. I thought it would be out this week. I'm not sure. I'll have to see about that. So other questions from the board on my report?
One reason not out yet because we're working to figure out how to best collect the funds.
Oh, correct. Thank you, John.
Listen, I met on that. We're going to be again Friday.
Right. This falls right in line with what we'll talk about in just a second around the kind of fundraising and the collection of funds, and how we do that is delicate and important.
Just on the logistics of the AP exams, I assume kids signed up for AP level courses quite a while ago.
Mm-hmm.
Is there some reason a communication couldn't go out once a student was confirmed in an AP class?
Right, in other words, you know, you've signed up for the AP and you know that there's an exam. If you want to take it, you'll have to pay for it. Right now, I, I mean, I know from my own sense that that's an understanding, but it's not printed.
Does it say though in the course selection, the catalog, does it say under the AP exams that there's a cost incurred with the test?
I thought it had been changed, so I can't say that.
I believe it says that, again, but it's still, I think, is not something we want to bury in a handbook and, you know, we need to be more explicit.
Because I know there was a time that it didn't say it.
Correct.
And I think it was going to get switched, so.
Right.
Assuming that there's some advantage to taking the test, is there, is there any problem with some of the students not being able to afford the fee?
We do, if there is hardship, then we do work that out.
And the exam itself is means-tested. In other words, they also work it out. The AP company, you know, that's part of their piece. That was one of the things we looked at when we decided to cut, is the fact that they'll take into account the eligibility of the student in terms of poverty.
The point is very much connected to the first thing we talked about in calendar and information out. And, you know, how can we be really consistent? It should be in multiple places, and when the course is signed up, if it's something different than what we do, we should definitely make sure that moms and dads and guardians know that this is a fee, so that if their heart is set on taking that exam, clearly knows at the earliest possible time that I'm going to have to pay X amount. And we have, as you know, we have some kids that are taking three or four AP classes, so. That's all I have, let's go.
Any other questions? Great. We'll move on to agenda item seven, the school safety zones.
So in front of you, you do have, I think in your packet, you have a draft, and again, both Martin and I have been working on looking at the safety zone language. You have a fairly colorful.
There should be one that was left, not in your packet, but was actually left on the table.
Yeah, yeah, right. It's in your, not in your packet.
Because there were a couple additional changes that I put in there after it had initially been sent out, so.
So the intent of this, and Martin, I think you're probably best to just walk them through this, but essentially, we made some changes last time. I think the desire is to, this should reflect some of the desired changes. There's, there was also some follow-up ideas and comments that came back from some of you folks, and so that has been attempted to be worked into that. And again, you know, thanks to Martin. Martin's been putting in some time to this too and trying to help with clarity, so. Anything you want to highlight?
Yeah, as far as the next steps, I think we're pretty close as far as having the initial proposed language to pass on to the city. How best to do that, I'm not sure. We need to set up a meeting with Paul Connor and the new city manager, whoever that's going to be. I believe they're announcing that tonight, if they haven't done that already. But I'd like to sit down to make sure I understand how they want this process to work. But this will be a document that we're much closer as far as the language. There may have to still be some changes. I mean, and it's a proposal to them. The Planning Commission presumably will modify it. The city will modify it, et cetera. Although, you know, this is looking a little bit ahead, but we're going to make, we are going to want to make sure that we are at the table when it's being presented to the Planning Commission, et cetera, et cetera. Whether it's having Sean do that, or Sean be there to support one of us, but I think that that'll be necessary. But, so I definitely, I want to understand if there's any other changes that the board wants to make to the actual language, the proposed language I have here. The second thing that we've worked on, but I need to go back and work on a little bit more, is a memo that would be from the school board to the Planning Commission. And I did get some input. I just haven't had a chance to work further on the memo, but we'll do that. So I think that that's probably it, but that, and I will circle, obviously, probably the first meeting in November, have a draft, which I would hope will be the one that we're going to use to pass this on. But by that time, we will hopefully know from Paul Connor to whom we are addressing this proposed language.
So Martin, are you looking for specific feedback tonight or an action to move forward with this draft in its current form?
I mean, I don't know if we, I mean, if we need an action as opposed to just consensus that this is what we should be passing on as far as the language for this. I still think that even more important than this language is the rationales that we're going to be providing and honing in the memo that we're going to provide. Because this doesn't give the rationales for why we want these different things excluded. And I think that's really.
But the letter that would accompany it would be the, would be the place for that.
That's right. And I mean, I'm not sure, again, how the process, if they're going to want to have actual testimony from us to either the city council or to the Planning Commission as far as here are our concerns and here's why we want to prohibit these uses. That really being the crux of this whole thing, I think, so.
From my perspective, it seems, again, that as Martin outlined, the next step, if the board is in agreement, that Martin and I would meet with Paul Connor and Kevin Dorn, or at least, you know, attempt to set that up, probably with Paul and maybe Kevin or whoever is in that, in that seat. And then gain some feedback around, this is what we're trying to do, and how would you like us to proceed? They may then provide us with some, you know, we'd like you to go through this or that. Obviously, we have a desire. It is going to happen. We just don't know. We'd like their recommendation on where to do that.
I think, I think the two of you had an idea before. We do too much, put too much more energy into trying to wordsmith this thing, okay?
Right.
I think their feedback could be more important than anything we're likely to say from this point.
Yeah, and this has already had the benefit of some feedback from Paul Connor, and we've modified it to some extent, whether we've addressed all of his concerns or not. But I mean, this, this is just to get it in motion. I want to get to the point where we're comfortable, yeah, the city is going to have issues, I'm sure, with certain things.
It would be good if you could get the Planning Commission chair to be part of that too.
Right.
They may, they may choose, you know, Paul or Kevin may say, hey, you know, why don't we have our next meeting or something with, and bring them?
Yeah.
But, you know, I think we'll leave it up to them, or at least start with Paul and Kevin and see, hey, if they want to invite some others, that would be fine for us too. Again, if the board's in agreement with that, it seems like.
So it sounds like there is agreement from the board, barring hearing anything else, that the draft with, with the revisions, as you've indicated in red, green, and blue, would be the draft to take.
I just wondered, Martin, on H, like, how, how you can get that information, like, how we can get that?
Oh, yeah, that is the other thing. Thank you for reminding me. That I'm waiting for David and the administration to get, and that's in process.
Okay.
But yeah, before this would be transferred or transmitted, presumably, we can have that, can we have that, do you think, by the first meeting in November, so that?
I think we can take a shot at it. I mean, part of this is, it's, the zone, as you know, it's not, we're trying not to be, and you said this last time, not to be just a circle around a school. You know, there's a little bit more rhyme and reason around that. So I do think we can come out with at least a draft that we could have on for a share.
Right.
Okay. So thank you for moving forward. That would be great.
Yeah, thank you, Martin. Worked hard on it. Yes, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move to agenda item number eight, administrative reports, and we've got four reports here. I think we're shifting the order a little bit.
Yes, we're going to do nutritional services first. And in your packet, board, you do have the nutritional service report. And again, I want to thank, number one, Rhonda for her hard work, and I want to say she's still onboarding, but she's, she's certainly on board now and doing the great work.
Good event.
And also, John, you know, Stuart in his office, and I think there's some great partnerships that have happened between the business office, he's Sue Spear, I think, and Rhonda know each other well, and so working very collaboratively to have data and information go back and forth. And John services as well for looking at it. So if the board has some specific questions, maybe that's the best place, unless you'd like to get a quick overview, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We've got positive things happening. Rhonda's got pretty significant percentage gains. She's a little worried about what will happen next year, you know, she's going to have to.
It might be a one-year wonder because we're never going to do that again.
But, you know, just some really positive trends happening. Obviously, I think the board's had a chance to look at that in some places.
So I have a question, just to clarify things.
Absolutely.
In the table here that's tied to year-to-date, 2013, 2014, is that for 2013 and, is that just the first month of the year?
Yeah, we're comparing, it's August and September figures together against August and September figures of this year. And every month, we'll, we'll match month to month and possibly do a year-to-date total as well, so that.
So your intent is to compare it year to year?
Yes, just to get an idea of where we were at. And actually, I'm not sure which chart you have, but we had 25 serving days in August and September this year. There was 28 last year. So our numbers were, I was, I was elated when I saw them. You know, there are some negatives in there. You'll see that there's a couple of elementary schools that went down a little bit, and that concerned me. And then I looked at the menu and realized it really wasn't, the menu was not set up to be necessarily as friendly towards the elementary schools as it was towards the middle and the high schools for a specific purpose. And now we're going to shift that, because I really want everybody to see gains. And there was a lot of confusion. The staff did a fabulous job. The staff did a fabulous job. They were cooking stuff that they've never cooked before, trying to sell it to kids when they really didn't understand it. And it's a lot about marketing. And, you know, they didn't know what some of the stuff was that was sending them. So it makes, you know, they're like, well, just try.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a learning, I'm sure there's a learning process.
Well, in fairness to Rhonda, she's made some, you know, some, asked a lot of her staff, and she's made some moves that I think, you know, are never easy, but in the end, the staff are saying, you know, kind of, thank you. And I think, you know, they're, they're also celebrating some of the, the success. It's hard to see it in the very beginning, but Rhonda has been, and we've all tried to, I think the administrators included and teachers have provided pretty positive feedback for those that are in those buildings. And it's been really, really good. I think one, one area of concern, of course, is the government, you know, funding issue. And, you know, just, you know, noting that with the federal commodity side, you know, we're all hoping that, you know, while, while you all help us to, to run it efficiently, in effect, we'll be hoping that the government will, will, will also be in that place. But there's a little kind of uncertainty, question marks around what can we expect? So as Rhonda's doing these month-over-month kind of pieces, there's some, a little bit of, again, question mark. And I know John and his staff are trying to really help us to make sure we're staying ahead of that.
I think it's great that the numbers are being looked at. I would simply encourage that if there's some way that you can get some simple graphics on the key, on the key parameters, which I think are like the service level, how much is gone, what the revenue is and what the expenses are.
Yeah.
So we can kind of get a picture of, I would appreciate if we could see it.
More visually.
Visually, as it's just a table of numbers.
Okay.
I mean, it's all in the numbers, I know, but.
Yeah.
But the image transmits the message a lot, a lot more efficiently, I think.
Absolutely.
Staff might appreciate that, too. It's good suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, we said at our last meeting, Rhonda, you've been able to benefit of being here, that we've heard a lot of great things about the food this year. And it's, it's awesome for us to hear the, yeah, we like the accolades, even though they're, they're supposed to be for you. And Carson and I like to pat ourselves on the back that we've done this great job in the hiring process. But, but really, it's all you, so, so thank you.
And I, I like to pat my staff on the back. They're a bunch of great people. You know, they do a really nice job. And they're, they're used to things being a lot different. I mean, I was creating a soup this morning, and I was just throwing stuff in, and they're like, where's your recipe? And I said, in my head, it's vegetable soup, what are we needing, you know, that kind of thing. So, and we get chuckles out of, you know, and laughs. And they're, they're really, they've come a long way, and I look for great things. Their productivity has increased. You know, I, I expect that, you know, things will even get better from here.
So if you just give Mr. Burke his chicken patty every so often?
No, we, we got a new chicken patty, and we had him try it before we put it in the period. And he approved it, so we can't complain about the chicken patty. I did just want to say that in the, and like you said, we'll do a graph, but we're comparing the number part. And it does say that in fiscal, at last year's revenues, there was, or actually, we took out of this year's revenues before we presented this, an eleven thousand dollar rebate that we traditionally get in the middle of the summer, which normally would be credited towards this year. That would have given us a five thousand dollar profit without any other revenues. And that really wasn't fair, because that was a rebate from Reinhardt for food that was purchased last year. So we took that out. There, the revenue figure from last year does have a rebate that came in over the summer that was put in there. But we wanted to get a real clear picture of where we were at. And even though, you know, we went from a loss, I mean, you know, from a profit to a loss, I looked at it and went, you know, we really did it, because we have received a check for thirty-seven hundred dollars, which will go against this, bringing the loss down to, you know, thirty-two. And.
Good, more come from operations.
And our, what we expect to get for reimbursement from the state and federal government, and I have been guaranteed those funds for August and September are in fact available. They hope October will be, but we do have a plan in place to combat that if we should lose our federal funding. But according to this report, we should be getting that thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars that isn't posting an additional revenue. And I continue to work very hard at cost controls and really watching what we're ordering, comparing prices. I did kind of go on a little bit of a spending spree, because I was sick of ordering every day. And I said, this is ridiculous, and just stock the kitchen. And now, we can sit back, look at what we have, and plan the menu around that. We got our first big shipment of commodities. We had, between the two schools, three hundred and fifty-two cases of food that they forced on us this week. So now the next few months will be based around food and commodity food. Basically, though it has a dollar value, really doesn't cost us that much. So I expect, you know, by the end of November, we'll see a real true picture of where we're gonna be for the rest of the year. But I'm still very optimistic that we are gonna at least break even. If not, you know, have a little bit of a profit to put into a fund or to pay back some of the deficit.
Thank you.
I also join the board, Rhonda, in complimenting you on all the, the early wins, too. I was, Martin and I were with a group of administrators and heard about the level of staff participation in the menu.
I'd like to answer that, because obviously, I am there during the lunches, as Rhonda knows.
We're gonna, we need to increase the wellness policy.
I've never seen that many students eat healthy food, including shrimps. I was actually quite surprised. But the other piece is, I've never seen that many staff members eat down there. And it really adds to the morale of the school. I think that's, that somewhat gets overlooked when you just look at the numbers. You know, when the kids see their teachers eat down there with them, it really makes a difference. And that's beyond all those numbers that, of course, look very favorable. You know, so, kudos to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and when you have lobster roll again, you need a lobster roll.
Actually, it's at the end of this month.
Okay.
That's where the deficit came from, but I'll take it. And I just, I just kind of wanted to let you know, one last little quick sidebar. I was really concerned when I looked at these numbers, because I said, you know, what's gonna happen in October? Those, those numbers were just so outstanding that I'm like, I didn't, I was really looking for, you know, a five to ten percent increase, a nice gradual increase. And I said, you know, where are we at in October? And I, so I looked, I was sitting in my office, and after I found the computer keyboard, I looked it up currently, as of today, we've exceeded last October's breakfast and adult sales already with ten days left. And we are at sixty-seven percent of lunch with ten days left. So October is looking really good as well. So I, I hope to continue to see the growth and, and the original growth. I said the best place we can increase revenue is through adult sales and through breakfast sales, and that's where we're seeing the biggest numbers. Lunch is a much bigger animal to tackle, because it requires more staff, more planning. But to see, you know, a sixteen percent increase across the board there was phenomenal. And the feedback that we've gotten, most of it has been positive, but I was really encouraged when we got the stuff that was not necessarily negative, but constructive criticism, because that tells me that they trust, that they can come and talk to us and that we'll make those changes. And that's how, you know, that's how you really get good growth, is when people don't just tell you the good things, but they tell you the bad things as well. So, you know, I couldn't have asked for a better first, you know, six weeks. I don't know that I want to do it again. But it, it's just, it's been really great. And I hope to continue this and that we're right where we need to be at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rhonda. And again, I think on behalf of the board, you definitely, you know, you've set this up right. You know, we're, it's gonna be in front of you, kind of in this, in this way. It's an important issue to you, to us, and, you know, these reports, I think, are really gonna be helpful. I think to the public who are watching is also important. And, you know, those that are volunteers, community members, when they're in and around the building, parents and guardians, you know, I think it's really important that we're, you know, we're, have some improved practices. And it's really healthy to eat in our lunchrooms, and we hope they engage with their children to do that. So, thank you, Rhonda.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, the one-to-one initiative, again, I want to be, you know, sensitive to time tonight. We have, we have a lot on our table. So I think without, unless the board has major concerns, what I'd like to do is entertain questions. I think you all do have a report, and I do think for the viewing public, we should make these available, you know, off of our website, which they will be through the, through the board packet information. So folks that are watching that wouldn't really want to look at this, they could. But I would suggest just answering questions. Again, I'm happy to say that, you know, again, we saw, I have seen Steve Walker at the service, and I think a lot of our staff here have gone to Mr. Menazur's service as well. But Steve and Steve Walker, Steve Webster, and Kristen Corcel are here to answer any questions that you might have, as well as Carsten. So, what would be your pleasure?
I think we've all had a chance to look at the report. I know there might have been a couple of questions for clarification. Do we want to open it up first? And maybe just to refresh, was this, were we doing this report on a quarterly basis, or every six months?
It's been every six months. And I don't know that it, I mean, the, the report doesn't repeat itself. We haven't done the same slide piece, we've done it in a different way. And again, you obviously see it in budget, too, so, but it's been, it's been kind of that update cycle that we've done. Again, I think this has also been important to the board as we back, you know, how we began this, this process and the, the desire and the need to kind of stay up to date. So again, you know where we are currently. There's some indicators in here around how, how our students are progressing. Again, it identifies kind of the pre and continued growth along the way on these assessments. And again, I think what we recognize is, you know, it's not all perfect, the kids that are getting it. We definitely see growth areas, and we still have growth areas for students that have had them. And again, that's all part of, you know, our work with the, with the teachers and certainly Kristen and Steve are a big part of that. The other major concern and major, you know, question has always been about the maintaining of the, these pieces of equipment. And our help desk, under Steve Walker's direction, has just, you know, they've done an amazing job, very responsive. Again, not to just the school that they're in, but the help line has been really, I think, important. That doesn't mean that they haven't had frustrations, or there hasn't been frustration out there, but it's kind of that continual process of evaluating how we're doing our work, so.
Yeah, I had a chance, I, there may be other questions, but I had a chance. First of all, I appreciate the team putting the, the goals in each time, so it kind of refreshes the board, myself specifically, on how we agreed we were gonna measure progress. So I appreciate that and, and would encourage you to keep doing that. One, I thought, I thought the report really showed a lot of progress in some of the areas that you, you talked about the last time we met. My fundamental question is, it sounds like we are making the kind of directional improvement that was intended with this investment. If you were to just step back, kind of independent of the report, just say, you know, the two, what, two or three areas where you've been pleasantly surprised at some of the outcomes, and then maybe identified either news or things were happening slower than you anticipated, what would those kind of bookends look like from your perspective? Anybody can answer that.
Steve, Kristen, Steve?
So one thing that I noticed and actually found quite rewarding, when we've done these reports in the past, Steve and I often work with teachers, and we've gone to them to collect examples of what they're doing. And this time, just in the timing of things in the beginning of the year, we weren't able to do that. So we sent out an email to all teachers, middle school and high school, and asked them to send us their examples of how they're using the laptops in the classroom. And we were overwhelmed by the response that we got and the variety of, of things that teachers were doing and some things that we didn't know about. And we saw that as a great thing, because they, those teachers didn't need our support anymore. So I think that indicates teacher progress and learning how to teach with the laptops in their classrooms. And, and that was really, I think, rewarding to see that. And if you look at, you know, the examples that we had in the report here, and there's a link, if you look at the electronic copy, to other examples that came in from teachers, you'll see things all along the continuum. We referenced in our next steps, the SAMR model. It starts at a teacher's level of being substitution. You know, they do something that they traditionally did with pencil and paper, and they're doing it on the computer, you know, all the way up through a fully transformed classroom. And there's a lot of teachers at substitution and, you know, all different levels that were evident there. So that was one of the things that was surprising and rewarding to see.
Some concern, any?
A big thing is that it's just, it's become a fundamental tool. I mean, they need it every day, and kids use it, use computers, you know, throughout their different classes. I think an area that, you know, we've, we've always said is an opportunity for improvement is math. Because math has such a structured program that, you know, it's, it's a challenge for them to figure out how to take the time to figure out how to weave in the technology. I think there's, there's ample opportunities to do that, but it's, it's one of those places where we still have to work on.
Good question. Any thoughts about eleventh and twelfth graders that are in the same classes? And the eleventh graders have laptops and the twelfth graders don't? Any thoughts about that? Because at, at that level, they often share classes, then half have laptops and half don't. I just wondered if you had any perspective on that?
Pat does reflect back, that, that's one of the difficulties they face. I mean, I think that they find that. They're working around it, because they need to. And obviously, there are a lot of kids who have their own devices, you know, or are being encouraged. You know, if a kid brings in their own device, we will set it up to run on our network. So, you know, we're making do.
One, and remember, there are, there are still desktops that do occupy certain places. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they're in the places by, in the, in the location where the classroom teacher and instruction's occurring. But I, I mean, I think there's, there still are opportunities, not as convenient, but there are opportunities within our, within the school. Now, obviously, as that will change into the future for twelfth graders, then we won't have the same number of devices. So again, we want to see that, that shift happen. So again, it i- it is a challenge and certainly, although I have to say that I think our seniors have been, you know, I'm not in there every day, but from what Patrick says, you know, they understand and they, they may do. So.
The other thing, just to couple on to what Kristen just said, is we do see teachers who are moving well beyond just the substitution phase, which is, which is huge. Because we really, to be honest, haven't done as much professional development as we would have liked to, because we've been consumed especially supporting new initiatives like the, the P3 projects and supporting EDU. EDU's taken a lot of our time. And so a lot of teachers on their own and working with each other are exploring new avenues and ways to use these tools in really productive and effective ways.
Do you feel like there's a, a high adoption rate across all the staff in terms of using the laptops as a learning tool?
I mean, I wouldn't say all, it's never, you never get all, but I'd say the vast majority.
A high, I said high adoption.
High adoption rate, definitely.
I mean, what I would, I'm sorry, Dan, what I would, what I would say about the, the folks that are on the fence, what I would say, though, is when Kristen or administrator or Steve get, get an opportunity to say, hey, it is kind of a substitution, like, you can do it on here. And then you can, and when, when they've seen that, I know there's some good examples of teachers who are kind of in that, you know, kind of stuck phase, and then are like the biggest supporters. And you've had some of those folks in front of you that now are taking it to, you know, a whole new level. And they're, they're kind of model teachers from their perspective of utilization.
So, so related to that, and this is part of a question I wanted to ask, but what about the students and the parents? What's the acceptance level there? Is there any resistance to this there, reluctance?
I mean, I, I can't speak to that directly. We didn't do a parent survey this time, so.
Well, but you may have heard some things.
But I have to tell you that when we were gathering this data, Mr. Burke said, basically, if you tried to take the computers away at this time from the students and the parents, the community would revolt. That's his opinion. So, I'm just, I'm just paraphrasing what he said. But, you know, he has his air pretty, pretty down to the ground, I think, for the majority of at least high school people.
You know, my, my concern isn't to the proponents. It's, it's to the few that may be, that may need to be roped in.
I guess I can speak a little for the middle school, because I know there were a lot of concerns when seventh grade was approved. And obviously, one of the things to be proactive, we had a lot of parent sessions last year, informational sessions, a lot of questions being asked, quite frankly. We don't have that this year anymore. You know, the community has gotten used to this and has gotten to be appreciative of that. I'd also like to add, especially in seventh and eighth grade, it has helped here that we have teams. You know, it does put a lot, a little bit of pressure on your colleagues if three out of the four colleagues are very successful in using it in the classroom and talk about it during common planning time. So I think that ropes in those that may be a little bit more hesitant. And yeah, I'd like to add, too, right before I came here, Pat Mayner, who is a veteran teacher, told me, you know, and she's in her last few years of teaching, Carson, make sure you tell the board that I couldn't teach without those anymore. You know, and I think that, that means a lot, especially when a veteran teacher tells me that, that it's such an important tool for her in the classroom. You know, and I think that's, that means a lot, especially when a veteran teacher tells me that, that it's such an important tool for her in the classroom at this point.
We do occasionally get phone calls from parents, but 99% of the time, they're, they're simple things like, how do I get access to EDU? My child hasn't invited me yet. So it's pretty simple stuff. I don't think I've gotten any complaints or major concerns this year, which is good.
Is that something that, Carson, it sounds like the team concept has sort of worked to create a, or foster a, a need within the team in terms of, you know, a teaching style. But do, generally speaking, do building administrators kind of have any visibility to, you know, the staff that may be lagging a little bit? Even the early, um, the early adoption techniques like substitution?
We do as much as possible. Of course, you know, Kristen and Steve are fundamental in assisting with that. We certainly try to be in the classroom. There's high visibility. You know, and I would also say, Paul, you and our new assistant principal is very techno savvy, to say the very least. And so I think that helps as well. You know, the, the kids see that, staff sees that and, uh...
Administrators see that.
Yeah, exactly. You know, he certainly has helped a lot of other administrative colleagues also. But, you know, I think by demonstrating that, one of the things is we've got, gone paperless completely during our meetings. Everything is put on Google Drive, everything is, is accessible on the K drive. So in other words, there are no longer any handouts. And I think we really, really need to demonstrate that in staff meetings, faculty meetings, those kind of things. So that staff sees the value, that those staff members that are a little bit more hesitant on the fence really see the value of how it's being used effectively.
Well, that transfers really, again, continued work in this area, but it helps for the moms and dads who the students, as I, I don't know where it is. There's a place that it can be found if it's been done right electronically, where they can go and get their assignments or they understand that. And that's been, again, Steve alluded to that with the work with EDU and other management systems that really does allow that to happen and, you know, across the entire.
So we're going to have to include the board in this or we're going to become the re rags of ours.
I was going to say, I don't want to digress.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, there's a plan for that too. We just got to do it through the budget process.
Yeah, so the last time you guys reported out one of the issues that, of concern to us, I know, was the damage percentage and things that were, and I didn't see anything about that in here. Can you speak to the trend a little bit?
It's pretty much maintained. It hasn't actually gone down, I'm just saying that just right.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, it hasn't actually increased. It's actually, I would say, gone down because of the number. We went up by about 200 and someone I thought, and it's actually maintained at the four to five in the WCD. And that's pretty standard. Um, I think kids are getting used to them. We adjusted a little bit better and we're reacting and communicating how to take care of them a little bit better. We have a new laptop this year. I think it's a little lighter, so it's a little easier for the kids to, to carry. It's a little nicer looking, so they may be a little bit more, hey, this is kind of cool, um, which was what our goal was. I think it's gone pretty well. This year is much better in that, that aspect, I think, so.
Great, thanks.
Hope anybody else sees anything.
I certainly was concerned last year about stewardship of the laptops and they have a four-year life and they're on a lease. So there's a, there's a security, the SunTrust bank.
But Andy showed me this year and Stuart has it in the report about Dell, that complete care. They offered us a new program where they realized that it's kids using these computers. And they looked at our size of how many computers and which ones they were and sent repair parts. Instead of waiting for these technicians in the summer to figure out, we need this, this and this, they sent the repair parts in a bulk. And, and the, our staff and the staff that came with Dell could just go to that room, get those parts and get things back in order. So it's kind of a realization that this is a growing process for students to learn how to use computers. And Dell's been great. The support's been great. I, I think you would agree.
I would totally agree.
Yeah.
Well, it's important for them too in Dell. I mean, I, I don't know about their business model, but obviously, there's been a significant increase in one-to-one devices and it helps, they're trying to figure it out too and certainly working with us.
It's allayed my concern because the last thing you want to do is have a computer assigned to a student in the fourth year and it doesn't work. And, and we've had that support. Even a, a damaged one is back to, to, in good standing, good, good conditions.
And so, has there been an emphasis on making sure appropriate professional development opportunities are available for the teachers who are, who are incorporating the laptops in their classrooms? I, you mentioned that you haven't had, you haven't had as much time to give professional development assistance, but, I mean, are there other opportunities? What, what does that look like?
Yeah, I know at the middle school level, it was two years ago that we did extensive professional development. But then also Steve and Kristen went to the individual teams and assisted them. The other thing, and you can certainly speak for that, but you've had a lot of sessions before and after school as well, you know, EDU, but also other things.
And it's embedded, you know, we'll go meet with teams and plan with them and our offices are here, but we actually, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, started up taking two days a week. We're over at the high school where teachers can either sign up to work with us or drop in and ask questions. And that's been really effective for teachers to come in and work on projects. A lot of it initially with the startup of school has been EDU focused, getting their classes up and running on EDU. But we also use that time to work with teachers on planning things for their classrooms.
Both Steve and Kristen have been, you know, really excellent around posting up their schedules and that goes out. You do that every week, I believe, posting kind of their schedule and that gives teachers the opportunity to know that Kristen's in the building and they can sign up for time with Steve. And that's, I think, been really helpful. I think a lot of what they say though is it's the, kind of the teacher on, you know, on-the-spot learning and then accessing their, their knowledge and expertise at a time where they're really ready to go to the next step.
And especially at the middle school with the P3 projects, you know, it's just a built-in opportunity for us to work with teams and help take them to the next level. So each year, we've been building and building and building. And so now people that, you know, were really novices, you know, several years ago, are now routinely using spreadsheets to analyze data and all the kinds of things you want them to do on their own.
And I would, I, I think, you know, Martin, your question's good. I think it's appropriate. I think you heard Steve, we like to do more. But, you know, we have to balance that against, you know, a variety of other things that are going on and the individual who, you know, is in need and how we, in some cases, some teachers, you'll hear them say that, they want their handheld. And they have to have it handheld for two or three times before they're on the solo, you know, and then they'll, then they're off and running. But, um, you know, it's a delicate balance. I do think, you know, we're trending in the right direction for sure. And, um, new teachers that come onboard generally, you know, are ones that are actually, you know, farther up. They're, they're new to us, but they've generally been educated and have the technology skills that are, are easy, you know, integration.
I think another indicator of success that Kristen, Kristen alluded to was the fact that the teachers are helping each others now. We have our office in the language arts office at the high school, we're over there. And I don't know how many times I'll sit there and I'll hear teachers around me all helping each other with questions and they're not asking me, I'm sitting right there. Right there, 13, there needs to be.
I can echo that it's not formal professional development anymore that's always necessary. It's colleagues helping colleagues and that's happening more and more.
But I guess I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned, or not concerned, but want to make sure that, that this equipment's being used to its maximum potential and not just a matter of being able to use EDU, being able to use as a basic tool, substitute. But are, are we making sure that there are the professional development opportunities that take you to that next level? To allow you to do the flipped classroom, those other things.
So I just want to speak to that. Last year, the TLC time for the high school was all technology based. You know, they knew that with 9th, 10th and 11th coming and the year previous, you know, worked with the 10th grade teachers when only the 9th grade teachers had them. And so that's been a key piece. This year, we're working on the Common Core state standards during that TLC time. You know, it has to be implemented, you know, we're going to be tested on it in '15. There's only so much professional development time. So our hope is that there's some carryover of the time. As we move through that, as we move to the new science standards, which have big engineering components, I mean, we're going to have to be looking at the engineering aspects and well can the computers help us with that work in order to do it? So it's, it's a continue ongoing flow. And that doesn't mean technology's put aside because, you know, the Common Core, you know, uses technology as well. So as we're doing the shifts in that, you know, one of the things we're talking about is what are the technology pieces? And to that end, we're building a new technology scope and sequence, K-12, so that we can, you know, really say, yeah, in 4th grade, it looks like this. In 6th grade, it looks like that. And then if that's what it looks like, what skills do we need to give teachers to make sure that it happens? So that should be, you know, finished prior to the end of this year so that it's in effect for next year.
I've been supportive of this effort since I first heard of it, so I'm really happy with the level of acceptance it seems to, you know, and effectiveness it seems to be going on. But this is technology and one of the things we know about technology is, is it's going to be different a few years from now than it is today. So I think another challenge that I hope someone's worrying about, I don't expect an answer right now, but I hope somebody's worrying about it is who's, is that somebody's looking at what's happening that could change the way this stuff gets delivered? So that we get a little bit of a warning, if it's possible, because it could affect things profoundly, both in the way it's delivered as well as what it costs. Just a, just a, just a caution point.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, we're, we're looking at costs very, you know, what's the right device to put into the hands of students when? To that end, IT does some beta testing of, you know, various products. You know, we obviously are talking to other schools that are using different things, whether, you know, their iPads or Edmonds, for example, has Prime Books this year.
The eyes are looking down the road, I'm very happy.
So I'm, I'm just saying, you know, we, we try to find out from, you know, the other people's experience, you know, what, what, what's working, what's not working for them as well.
I mean, I think the other part, Dan, you know, we'll get into this more in the future, but it's also about what makes us visionary and transformational around what our business is wanting. And so programming and, you know, gaming and, you know, further in-depth analysis of work, we have, you know, and that's part of what we've been doing administratively is reaching out to these other businesses and they're saying, they're telling us what we need. How do we make those connections happen so that our students are engaged and are learning and our teachers are, you know, at their side? There's some interesting things and I think, you know, we've got to be able to keep the bo- board up to date on some of our kind of future planning. But that's an important piece, you know.
I spent a lot of time in the business world doing this kind of stuff. So it's, uh, one of the things I would tell you is the businesses are very good at telling you what they need today. They are not so good at telling you what they need five years from now, okay? And I think the challenge that the education system has is to provide the solution, shooting the ducks that are flying, right?
Right.
Not the ones that are sitting still.
And you bring up a good point. And some of our visits, one of our administrative visits to a business, it's actually some of the ideas of our students that will help them develop their future.
Absolutely, that's right.
Because it's the student thinking around graphic design that will say, we never thought about that. You know, I'm 40 years old and, I'm not 40, I'm 10, the individual is.
I wish I could say.
The child, the student, you know, is saying, oh, have you thought of this? Good idea, you know, good idea.
Yeah, no.
And we have examples of that, obviously, in the students and people.
I think it's great you're talking with the businesses. Don't get me wrong. I just don't want you to...
You're, you're right on. And I think we don't want to be stagnant. And I think that, you know, again, we've got people, at least in this room right here, that are certainly, I think, pushing administration to think very, you know, long range. How can we do that?
The other big thing we do is we constantly try to focus on concepts. It's not, it's not about learning software, but it's about learning, you know, the big picture concepts and the, the higher level thinking that kids need to have. And one of the biggest things is their ability to learn new things. Because no matter what we teach them today, it's going to be different when they graduate from college.
Yeah, all you got to do is look back five years and decide that five years from the future is going to look a lot different than it is today.
So that's one of the ways we're hedging, but it's, it's a challenge.
You know, given, given your surprise and delight at sort of discovering how teachers are using the, the tools right now, is there a mechanism to sort of, I, I was going to say either audit that and, and disseminate it out? Because it sounds like if you're just discovering this, it, you may be relying on a more informal network to communicate at more of a local level, like within the school or within the team where some of these have been successful. Have you thought about how to get this information out to, to the rest of the staff and across the buildings?
Yeah, part of what Stuart was talking about, the scope and sequence that we're developing, a key component of that is going to be links that go to example projects that other teachers have done in South Bloomington curriculum. And, you know, links to examples of student work and stuff like that.
But, but I, I'm hearing what you're saying and I think it's a good point is, you know, for instance, you've got, the, the report is, has positive trend information. Sharing, just as you did with nutrition services, sharing the successes, which kind of keeps that, you know, that positive momentum going. So, I mean, I think that's definitely something we need to do is to say, hey, staff, our initiatives, you know, with the one-to-one are continuing, you know, to be positive and let's focus, you know, on that and celebrate. So it's good, a good point.
And real quickly, also, we're going to share this report now that we've shared it with you, share it back with the teachers so that they can see the other examples for inspiration and whatnot too.
Good. Very impressive work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you all.
They don't, they don't, they don't know when it's like over, they can leave, you know, they want to let them go. We know they have other things that are exciting. So we're ready to move on?
Yes, yep.
So, uh, moving on to fundraising, which is the next administrative report. Uh, what we've, what we've done, again, this has been a fairly lengthy time the board has waited just to get information. And I think it's really important, fundraising is so broad and they, they want to get, I think, John, he's been working hard to collect a lot of information. It's not just about fundraising, it's also about just, you know, cash collection or collections. And, you know, I don't know how many years ago it was that John Everett directed this work to happen, to, to come up with some guidelines. I think we were still even short-sighted and totally understanding all of the pieces that were out there. Fundamentally, I'm going to tell you, and again, I'm, I want to allow the board to ask questions. We developed guidelines and we haven't been following the guidelines. You know, there are, there are pieces and parts that the guidelines have been followed, but in general, it's a no. You know, I don't have a district calendar of, of fundraising. As you see in the articulation, there's, you know, over $500,000 that comes in, in this particular account. Not all fundraising, some of this is just, you know, money being brought in from ticket sales and et cetera, et cetera. And so it is a big issue. I al- I, on one side, you could say I'd like it to be totally removed and just implemented into the general budget. On the other side, I say that if it is an extension of the curriculum and the work that we're doing, does it have to happen? And if the answer is no, then should we do it? In some cases, I think we could say no, but there are some things in here that are extensions to our curriculum that are actually appropriate, extensions of our curriculum that really do allow kids to delve into the meeting of their ends. And when I think about that, you know, there are many things that kids are doing that definitely help them develop personally, help them develop their citizenry as they maybe go and do a group car wash or some things like that, that are really important. And again, we want to make sure that kids are, you know, have those, those right exposures. Do we have the right balance? I don't know. And so part of my charge is really to look at, you know, some, some next steps and some remedies around what, what could happen. And so right now, I've charged kind of three bullets, you know, here and I will need to probably add some more and you may have some ideas for me, but you see those so noted. You know, are the events noted in the summary sheet used? Is it expanded learning experiences? If not, you know, should, should we require them in the curriculum? Is participat- or is participation by students a requirement, either as an individual or as a, as a member of a team? If I don't do the activity, then am I not able to participate, et cetera? And is the language about the no door-to-door, is that clear and explicit? And is it reasonable? And again, I'd like, you know, I'd like to get some specific feedback. We, we obviously have forums that I believe need to be more standardized and, and more specific. We have some things that we do just as a school around, we collect fees when tickets are sold, right, at, at events. Uh, that money goes to certain places. We have money that comes in, you know, from, um, an event. How does that money get broken out and is that right? You know, what does it go towards? So I think, you know, there's a lot of pieces here that we really need to think this through. So again, let me, let me just pause and, I don't know, John, do you have anything that you want to add to?
Well, I, I think we need a little more clarity on, um, um, I can't think of the word, volume, the, the, what, what is appropriate? We have a trip, a trip that's planned to a different country that's cost $45,000 in their fundraising, their parent collecting, um, group fundraising. And it was approved by the, by the building, but, um, is that something? at twenty-three hundred dollars per student that the, the board knows about? I would say no, and is that something our policy should be covering? So, it's more transparent, I guess I'm trying to say it, because I'm concerned about it.
Yep.
And, um.
So, when you say the volume, John, it's again, you know,
Well, forty-five thousand dollar fundraiser,
Yeah, it's a lot.
Um, has approved at the building level, and that's where we have it now, but should that be at the district level?
Is there a, is there a stopgap measure, that anything over?
We have certain guidelines in our budget for forty-five thousand dollars.
Well, and also, I mean, the first question that comes to my mind when you bring that up is, is, is it inclusive? Is it available to all students, to, who it's geared at? I don't know the details of it, but,
Right.
That, you know,
At the equity.
As a, yeah, as a public school, I think we do have to be concerned about that.
Sure.
I think, and I think there's also possibility that some of these activities can bring on other obligations and liabilities to the district that I hope included in the budgeting for, for the fundraising effort. I mean, I, I have this feeling, I don't know, really know, not being a legal expert at all, isn't it, but, that if we get the district's name associated with the, uh, the activity,
Mm-hmm.
that somehow we've picked up an obligation that, uh, we need to make sure we are dealing with.
Understand, yeah.
Yeah.
I have some concerns, David, when I look at this, and I, it,
Refresh this screen.
Even from my naive standpoint of just parent, this, this list is not inclusive.
Well, we didn't, and again, we know that it's not. Again, I think in the, and what I'm saying is, we still have it, I, I think we responded to some of the board questions. It's still not, it's still not complete.
Right, I understand, but, but the question is really, why is it not complete? Because administrators know what, what is out there in terms of fundraising, so I'm just not, I'm not clear on where the disconnect is.
I think you're probably right that some of the administrators know more, I mean, maybe we, again, we don't have a great system for looking at, having them all approved, and they're all documented, and they're all stored in a, in a, you know, in a central location. Um, but we also have some difficulties with PTOs, right? PTOs are indep-, you know, are independent, connected to schools. And so, that poses an issue too, or boosters, right? And so, we have a lot of those things, we don't necessarily, we should, and we need to require that. What grain size, you know, is in volume amount, maybe we need to set that target, similar to the way we set kind of our, our targets around, you know, what I'm authorized to do, and it, you know, when you look at that in comparison, we got five hundred thousand dollars of fundraising and collection fees versus, you know, some of the, the funds that you see, that you have to approve. So, I, again, the, the list goes on, and we didn't have this list as completed as it is now. And we have a lot more to do, but I, I do think that, you know, and I'm, I'm not just giving you, you know, talk time here, we need to have this more thoroughly looked at and put some equitable and fair parameters on all schools.
So, your, your suggestion is that this is gonna be reviewed by administrators? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious if that's incl-, if that's enough of a group to do it.
Well, what I, what I think needs to happen, we, what happens is, is if you, if it starts to get broader, then we get, you know, we can get, um, individual personal interests into, into things. We have an obligation to render, uh, an equitable education for all, and that's what you asked me to do. Fundraising is, is around us. How do we figure out how to make it, make sure it's equitable and fair to all? The elementary schools that have more of a means at one and less of a means at another, how do we, how do we do that? I gotta ask that question. I really wanna have the administrators work with me to understand it. Number one, we gotta administer it, and number two, you need to know about it. And so, I'm not saying that it won't go back out to a broader group to say, "Dude, did we get it right and what concerns do you have?" But at the get-go, I, I gotta, we gotta get this figured out more than it is now.
And I think, Julie, there might be a slight misunderstanding that I'm reading this as David's gonna delegate to a subcommittee that would actually review and update the current practices so that there would be a new procedure that would go out. And I assume there'd be, is that, am I interpreting that correctly? So, it's not the approval process, it's, it's update the guidelines, it's provide training, it's, um, it, it's taking into account.
That's fine, you're right, I was misunderstanding, because really, when I, I thought you were like having them audit themselves, which is not really a smart thing to do, okay?
I have a question, just to follow up what John was saying about, um, trips. And, you know, you have the trips that are sort of add-ons and people fundraise and you go on a trip. And then there are the trips that are part of the school program and the curriculum, and I, I just noticed that there's a links trip to Nature's Classroom, and I know that several years ago, it was built into the budget, because it was felt that that was important enough for sixth graders to go, so that was built into the budget, so parents did not have to pay for that. So, yes, it, I,
There was a year where we didn't actually let any kids go to Nature's Classroom, cause it wasn't in the budget.
Right, but I think that,
But I do not believe.
I think there was a year where, I think originally, parents paid for it, because I had two kids, and we paid for them to go to Nature's Classroom. And then I think there was a period where it was paid for, and I could be wrong.
I, I was an administrator in that building,
Okay.
doing the budget, and we didn't let people go to Nature's Classroom, cause we couldn't budget for it.
Well, and my understanding of that, Stuart, is that if it's part of the public school curriculum, you can't send a bill to a parent. Um, and that's what that, i- if indeed that's how it happened, and I may have misremembered, but, if it's an expectation that every child get to go, it's not equitable if one family can't afford it, and another family can, and one child is able to raise a lot of money through their tulip bulbs and another isn't. So, I just wanted to bring that up as a little bit, it's a different kind of trip versus sort of the, the TIE or the other, and so.
Yeah, I, I think we, you know, I also wanna be sensitive, there's some things that have happened at one elementary school that doesn't, isn't of interest and maybe at another school, it's part of, you know, orchard is near the apple, or, you know, I'm making this up a little bit, but, you know, I, I, I do want these, if there's these extensions of, uh, experiences that are important, but I don't think it would be right that in your school, you get twenty-five of those experiences, and in your school, you only get two, right? And, I mean, just, I'm not talking cost necessarily, but that's, that's out of skew. And so, I do think that there needs to be some balancing here of this, there needs to be some deeper thinking around how to do this. And, um, you know, that's, that's really kinda where we're at right now.
I think, I think too, David, the concept, I mean, I know where you're going with the idea of having sort of a, um, a, a hurdle rate that gets back to the, the volume, or, I mean, basically, the, the dollar amount. But, but the reality is, some of the other issues that have been brought up here could supersede the dollar amount, which might include liability. You could have a very modest fundraiser, but it would be a lot of liability to the district. You could have a, again, a modest fundraiser that might not meet that limit, but might be exclusionary. And then I also think, you know, the team that you're gonna have evaluate this should look at the, the notion of fee-based fundraising as well. So, you know, the idea of, um, is it appropriate to bring in, uh,
Third party.
a third party, um, that, uh, would run some of these fundraisers for a fee, um, as well as training of students. I think when you have a student dressed in a, an SB uniform, who's presenting themselves as an SB student, they should know two things. One, how much of the money is going to their cause and what is the cause? So, I think there's a whole student training element, um, around this as well.
Yeah, I also, I, I'll, just, more globally, I think we have to be pretty careful how often we send kids out to our taxpayers,
Agreed.
collecting money. And, I, you know, we just don't wanna top 'em up, especially in a time where we're asking for pretty big tax increases.
No, I, absolutely, I think, you know, that was part of our discussion, again, administrative, that's part of the calendar coordination, it's not just with, you know, these types of things. It's really looking at, you know, if, if there is an event that's going on and we're communicating, or kids are communicating, are we doing it? And is there overlap where it's, you know, at your house, you're getting, in one, in every week, you're getting, you know, five kids a week, you know? And, you know, this, that's very complicated and, and wrong, I think. That said, I do think that there's an appropriate amount of exposure to say, as you said, "This is who I am, this is what we're doing, this is what, why we're doing it, and this is what I'm asking." You know, and so, there's, there's some, again, really important lessons, I think, that are done that way.
Except that won't happen door-to-door.
Right, well, again, part of that is, you know, but when kids are expressing themselves to, you know, at the car wash, you know, this is what we're doing.
Right.
And can they adequately do that versus, "No, we'll do this," well, what does it go to? "I don't know," you know, that's not okay.
Right.
So, you know, I think there's some real, uh, validity, again, I hear it in the training and, and clarity around that.
So, at this point, what are you suggesting as follow-ups to this? Have you established a?
I have not yet established.
Okay.
Again, I wanted to start with you, I mean, if there's a very different direction from the board, um, you know, then, you know, I would obviously take that. At this point, you know, I, I do think there's some next steps here that, you know, I need to, again, work, John's got a little bit more, um, work to do on, I'm just understanding what are the,
Yeah, David's been trying to me, I, I ran out of time. I, I have, oh, the boosters gave me twelve years of records, and I forgot the PTO at this school. There's a smugglers thing at Central.
Yeah.
Some of those, I, I know that, That's why I threw draft on the top of it, cause, but I, I thought it was important to get the scope out at, at this point, doc groups and, um, senior at the high school, there's some groups like that that need to be included. But, I do wanna say that the, the administration office at the middle school with Margaret and, um, and Michael Day's office with Lynn Kynock, they keep excellent records, and if that's a concern, it shouldn't be, cause they keep excellent records now. What goes on with the fundraising, I know the money's there, but what goes on before, you know, that's where I can't make a comment on, but.
So, I mean, I, I do think it's important that we get a, you know, John has indicated, you know, a more comprehensive list of what, what, what are exposures currently. And then that would link to the kind of the reevaluation of our charge and specific to the questions that I'm asking. And in addition to some of what I've just heard from you tonight, you know, around, of being really clear and explicit around documenting when they're happening, where they're, where they're likely to happen, and, you know, what the expectation is of a student, of students.
So, it sounds like at a pretty near-future meeting, we'll have a comprehensive list? And then we will understand who you delegated this to and, and maybe get an idea of what the timeframe is for an update.
Yeah, basically, what I, I did say here, December, I mean, I put December twentieth, you know? It's important that I give a little bit of a target. If that doesn't work with you, I mean, if it's earlier, that's fine, but, you know, we're gonna be pretty busy as a board, you know? I, I, I do have some things I need to make some decisions on, we've got current fundraisers that are gonna, gonna happen. And so, there needs to be some clarity around that right now, in the kinda status quo expectations, while this is, when I'm gonna say, status quo to the guidelines adherence, as they are now, and then look at that, the, the factors that we want.
Can, can I ask a, um, this is kind of maybe a higher-level question, uh, on this whole issue. I, I'm just trying to get my mind around grounding this in policy governance. And, and, and a lot of this conversation, it seems like we are going deep into operational details. You know, I understand, I'm trying, you know, I'm looking, for instance, we get to rate ourselves tonight, and the third item is the board followed principles of policy governance, focusing on establishing general expectations with appropriate limitations, allowing administration to focus on the operational details. And, and, and this may be fine, but I, I'm looking through, I'm trying to ground it in my mind, um, what is a policy that we are concerned with? I'm sure there is there, that'd be there, but,
Treatment of community.
Treatment of community, I think financial,
Treatment of financial reporting.
Financial reporting, even though it's really outside of, you know, our, our general budget, it's money that does come in. And so, I think it, it, it walks a really fine line, cause under the policy governance, looking at just our, our functional budget operations, you could say, this isn't underneath that, but it does have factors in places where it's supporting student, you know, learning. So, I think it does, I mean, it falls under this.
And that's a, that's an excellent question, Mark, cause I think we as a board need to keep pulling ourselves back up to policy governance. I think the reason this board has adopted what we refer to as modified policy governance is this issue wouldn't even make the radar screen, um, under policy governance, but it does represent over a half a million dollars of cash flow into the district that arguably, we wouldn't know today whether that was an understatement of actually what the district's operating budget was, was or should be, um, and the exposure the district might have from a liability. So, I think raising that conversation to say, treatment of community, I think treatment of staff, I think, um, financial reporting and conditions, and I think, I think the liability for the district is under financial,
The sense protection is.
Yeah, and protection of, yeah, protection. So, I think it does get at least on those four policies, um, in terms of a, a, a tactical operating issue that, um, you know, that would raise it to the level of awareness of the board policy.
And I think maybe when those, when those come back around, you know, there should need to be thought put into, maybe we report on that.
Yeah, and that, that's kinda, kinda my point, is, cause in fact, just looking at the policy, it doesn't really go under treatment of community, because this is supposedly in our policy, not our concern of having people knocking on community members' doorsteps. It's making sure they have access to the schools and access to, and that's not to say that that's not a legitimate concern, but I just, you know, I don't wanna go down, and it's, I shouldn't say, yeah, I don't wanna go down paths that we haven't really kind of anchored in, in what the policy is. And, and perhaps we should, not right now, but kind of really try to look at where this kinda fits in. Cause sometime, cause we've done this before, where, where we've had something, I'm not gonna remember the exact item, because I only have two weeks worth of memory. But, but where we've, we felt that there was an important issue for us to look at, we actually modified policy, make sure, yeah, there's been numerous occasions to make sure that we're still kind of guiding ourselves that way, but.
Well, I think it's a worthy, I mean, we have next week, I have some opportunity to connect with some of the folks that are doing some policy governance and gonna ask the question, you know, "How are you handling fundraising? Where does that fall into your policy governance process?" In addition to our, our, our work as, as we look at those reports coming up again.
Um, you know, just a thought in that area, because I think that's a good discipline for us as a board, is when we look at an agenda, and maybe this is something, David, when you and I are doing some agenda planning, maybe we can sort of highlight in forens what the policy is beyond, on each side of each topic. I think that might drive some discipline that we, we have to remind ourselves of now.
That would save Martin having to look it up, yeah.
Well, it's really good.
That's our goal.
Yeah, no, it's good, I mean, a lot of, I mean, I've thought about just having by your side, you know, how did, how is this kind of your work and what's my work? And, you know, but I think,
Right, and then that's the main thing, is that, that it's easy to slide into those too many details.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments on fundraising? Great.
Great, thank you. So, ENDS, um, Stuart has, again, it's in front of you in draft form. Stuart and I have worked, again, administrators have worked, uh, with us around this. And this is again, an evolution from where you saw, I'm gonna say, a couple months ago, maybe more, where you saw some things that were beginning to, to walk into this, this draft language. Stuart does have a slide thing, but I think it's probably easier if you, if you wanna just ask some questions. What he's done, um, in working with me and trying to provide some clarity to where we are, is kinda do the red line, what's changed, so you can do that crosswalk. And I think the other part, more ter- towards the end, is really looking at kind of the, the work of evidence connected to what we're gonna kinda call dashboard, uh, information. And so, he cert-, he is currently working, uh, with the IT data folks around getting this, so it could be really effective and informative data that can help inform instruction specific to our, but obviously, before we go down that too far, uh, we need to, we really need to be, um, mindful of what it is we're, we're asking and why. And that's part of this. Way back, again, not that long ago, when we, when we first established ENDS, obviously, things have changed, Common Core, et cetera. SB five and six were, you know, kind of purposely left out at that point, I think, again, part of it was the newness of policy governance and, you know, things were really working well at the high school and that, from that perspective, so they didn't meld in. From my perspective, it's really important to have some clarity around, you know, our continuum. It doesn't help, I don't think, when you have a, an eighth grader and a ninth grader, and they're kind of being held to some different information and measurements. And so, I think it's important that our ENDS represent our ENDS pre-K through twelve, and that we don't confuse it with SB five and six, um, and that we, we really look at the connected language that we need to have specific to, for instance, Common Core. Stuart?
Uh, before, before you go, go there, actually, uh, my biggest concern with, Uh, before, before you go, go there, actually, uh, my biggest concern with, with, with this, and, and, and I looked at the language some. And there were some things that seemed fine and some things that did not, but is the process. Because it is my understanding, going back to policy governance, that this really, and tell me if I'm wrong, if I misunderstood, because in the previous go-around. You know, the board took the lead very much so in figuring out what the ends are. And I'm a little uncomfortable, especially since we specifically said, let's proceed by having a committee that includes board members. Uh, and administrators and teachers and possibly community members as well. I mean, this, you know, if this is a suggested kind of first step and such, maybe, you know, that, that could certainly be seen, seen as helpful. But, but my concern is really that th- this is, this is a part that is board and community driven. Although obviously, needs to get the input of the people on the ground who have to, to implement this stuff. So, I guess I, rather than getting into details, you know, as, as a next step, whether, you know, we need to sit back and the board needs to look at this a little more carefully.
Yeah, and I, if I could add to that, um, David, this, this was a board-driven initiative. That incorporated a number of working groups that were made up of community members, of staff, of students. Um, a, a broad group of stakeholders that were brought in. So, I, I share that concern, Martin, that this, this is a document that was intended to be the umbrella over which. You know, buildings and administrators and, and programs would, would fall under. So, what we, I think what we saw is, um, i- if I can characterize it, I would, I would probably characterize it as cultural resistance. Within the facilities that have some very strong and well-grounded foundational principles that have stood the test of time. And I think the, you know, the board has listened to that feedback and seen the struggle of, you know, this is how a program fits with ends. It's tagged on as sort of an afterthought to, you know, SB five or SB six or, or, um, Common Core, or what, whatever. Whatever seems to be the overriding principle, and then ends gets tagged on. So, um, my, my frame of reference is that this still should be a board. Board as a representative of a community-driven process, but acknowledging the fact that we've had, um, we have some cultural, um, and. And well-grounded, hopefully fairly similar and, and, um, easily meshed, um, facility or, or grade level, whatever it might be. Principles that can be, can be meshed into the ends, so that, uh, there is, there is sort of a, um, I almost would call it gen two. Of, um, of the ends policy that takes a more internal to our district and marries it up to all the work that was generated by, by this diverse group. So, you know, it could be as common as sort of an English, Spanish translation of ends, or it could be a, a modification. But, um, some of my feedback to this was, there was a little more fundamental change. Some of these, I think, was, was very natural and fit well. Some, to me, was a significant enough of a shift from what was generated out of the interactive community groups, that I think it would constitute more, a more, um, rigorous board dialogue. So, hopefully, that gives a little bit of background to kind of where this came from.
Let me just give a quick piece. The intention here, the board owns ends, absolutely. However, I mean, my thinking was, I wasn't gonna say, hey, you board, you gotta update these ends, you know. I mean, my thinking was, you asked me to kind of keep track of this. This is a draft. The next step is really in your core. I mean, I think we could talk about a subcommittee of board. And, you know, that, that just looks at this, refines it from kind of the, the initial development of the ends and those collections. And then there could be a broader base then, community input session where, you know, we're really trying to get some feedback from the community membership. But I think it's wrong for us not to ask, you know, for me not to try to, as you said, kind of the natural evolution of pulling these things in. Uh, I, I have definitely seen that there's confusion out there when one, one, again, the eighth grader's kind of being monitored to this, and the high schooler's kind of being monitored. And we're kind of saying, oh, they kind of just kind of fit. And I, I don't think that's advantageous to our evolution of our ends. So, that's really why it's here. And I think Martin's right on around, you know, this is the board, and it's here to you really undefined with, with next steps, really.
And I, and I guess we've also asked as a board to have some integration, because, um, I mean, we've had conversations about SB five, SB six, the, you know, Common Core states, you know. Um, and, and so, I think we kind of asked for this, to kind of have it, because we're all speaking a different language, depending on where you are. And having, and having this sort of integrated, so I think this is a really good attempt to kind of try as a first step to put some of that language together and blend things. I, I, I was excited to see this, because, um, I'm just hoping that as we move forward, we won't be talking about a lot of. You know, here, we're talking about SB five and six, and here, we're talking about the ends, and, but we can all be operating from the same language.
Right, absolutely. And, and, and the problem is, is that initially, this was the community and then the board. And this is what we came up with, that the community wants to get out of the schools. We did get, we sought input from teachers, uh, we did get some input certainly from administration, but very little, actually. There was very little input that we received. But now, now we have, all right, now we have teachers, administrators or, or administrators coming back at the other way. My, my point is that it's a committee that needs to include community and, 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 uh, the, maybe just represented through board members, but it could expand beyond that. And then the administration and teachers to actually work on it together. And, and maybe this is the first step for that. This is what we've heard, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. I, I.
One of the things I definitely know, and I'm, you know, obviously, I was around when they were developed, but they were done, I'm gonna say, not completely in a vacuum. But there wasn't, we didn't have a lot of community input. We had some. We had some.
Very, very early, there was.
But not a lot.
Before I was in the board, actually.
Well, again, I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm.
I was there. There were two groups of about forty or fifty people.
There was quite a few people.
Well, again, there, uh, from my perspective, you know, when we've major change, didn't seem like, at least didn't transcend to, to know then what it was. Staff, our, our issue weren't really, didn't feel part of, I'm not saying they weren't included, I mean, I, I don't want to make you feel bad, you didn't have a good part. But it's a kind of the, the evolution. And as, as you know, when I started, one of the things we said is, we need to be clear about our ends and what are the artifacts of the collection of the evidence. And so, that was the first, that was the, for many of them, kind of the directional purpose that was being administered, administered board to the administrators, to the teachers. These are the ends, and we need, we need the evidence that, that shows that what are, what are we gonna acquire. And so, there's just been, it's been slow. And so, I, I do think that, you know, we need to be thoughtful about, we give you now the, the next feed, with some feedback, and then we talk about that, the, the process by which you're gonna use to reengage the, the folks. To, to, you know, bring clarity to the, to the ends.
So, David, what do you think about having a subcommittee look at this first step?
Yeah, I, I think, um, one thing, maybe phase one might be for all, all, you know, board members to, to read it over and give some feedback, kind of independent. To a subcommittee, a couple of members of the board that then would take the feedback from, from all. And perhaps would meet with myself and Stuart, you know, we potentially answer questions, which would clean the document up and would represent kind of your, those of you who've been on the board. Kind of that, that important dialogue that you know was there. And then to bring that back and do some sharing, but then I think maybe have some forums that would connect, you know, our constituents that are out there. You know, make it more available, maybe ask for some electronic feedback, you know, um, et cetera, you know, I, I don't know. I, I worry sometimes about just trying to get the, the people here. Maybe we need to think about a multi-pronged approach around getting feedback on the ends.
Well, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure on this, but I, I think that the key, though, is to, to have, have, uh, the board working with administrator teachers. Uh, to try to, to, to make this work. Uh, because I do recall, because, because when I got on the board, one of the first things I did was work a lot on, on language smithing, which is what Julie says I love to do. Uh, and, and working on the language with this, but, but I looked at the SB six. I looked at report cards from the elementary school to see what they were looking at, and I tried to match those up. And the, the point was that, yeah, we actually covered the SB six, but that wasn't enough. That's not, I mean, we, we weren't going to just say, we want just the SB six. There are additional factors, additional things that we're looking for, and we put them in here. So, so that, so it's not, I mean, we, we perhaps have to ask ourselves again, is, is it too, you know, are we asking too much? Do we need to try to narrow things to try to align more with where we are? Are we pushing for too many extra things? So, I think there's a lot of questions that the board has to ask itself, but still, it's not doable without working very closely with people who have, who are stakeholders in this, who have to implement this.
I think particularly the people that, at the high school, that are really married to the SB five and six, or, you know, I think that's part of.
Well, in fairness, again, this is, I mean, in fairness, what we've tried to do is really engage. And I, one area of probably, I should have articulated the most, was our administrators were probably, you know, not informed appropriately, not informed enough. And so, when they're then the administrators of administering and evaluating, it's really critical that they understand the complete, you know, the importance of the ends and how we're gonna do it. So, I absolutely agree. I think, you know, a subcommittee would be a good idea to have, and I think we ought to, actually, the subcommittee ought to come up with, again, with myself and Stuart. And we ought to just look at what are the critical steps of inclusion, um, not just, you know, what, what level of teachers, right? What, you know, what group of people really need to be, you know, maybe even having the same questions asked. Are we hitting them? Should, you know, report cards, articulation of evidence around how are we gonna track this success or, or not, and measure these things.
Well, and I, I mean, I think if, if we're realistic, I think there was a misfire in that the board had an expectation that the ends would be rolled out through our, the organization. When that work was completed. So, uh, um, I think it took us a while to figure out that it hadn't been rolled out. Either in a, in a timely manner or thorough manner, whatever it might be, which, you know, I'm, there's no finger pointing going on, it's just we discovered that. So, um, we've taken the feedback that, um, there are, uh, sets of principles or missions out there that probably complement the ends, but are not, not all-inclusive either. So, um, I think that, I think one of the things the board can do and really needs to look to the superintendent and administration to really, um, adhere to and execute against is. What are the outcome, what outcome do we want from a gen two exercise? And, you know, from my perspective, it would really be that everybody's on board with a shared set of ends. And that those will be pushed down through the organization in a timely manner and show up in metrics, show up in, um, dialogue about justifying new investments. You know, kind of show up, um, with, with no, you know, referral or secret decoder ring that looks back at historical missions or visions from that standpoint. So, a, a commitment, which, which I'm hearing, I'm hearing that this exercise, Stuart, that, that you've gone through is an attempt. An acknowledgement that there is going to be a, a common vision once we get to an end product. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, first of all, I, I want to reiterate, this is the board's policy, the ends, the end, and the power really is with you. But I do want to say, this is much more than the SB five and six. You know, um, we could have a discussion about what should academic look like, because I think that's really one of the areas where the most change. This question of whether listing courses or listing skill sets, which is where you find most of the SB six, for example, in this piece. But it really is about the evolving educational field that has happened since the ends came out. You know, there's the Common Core state standards, and English Language Arts and Math. There is science on the horizon, and while I can reference that, those cross-cutting standards in science. And actually, I just got the social studies standards this week, you know. So, our teachers are dealing with four different curriculums, especially our elementary teachers. And we have to build a system that integrates in and is not just academics, but those things in terms of what does it mean to be career and college-ready? Which is really the ends as defined by the board, right? And those documents do begin to say things like demonstrating independence as a career and college-ready skill. Which is not in your ends, but actually maybe should be in an end, and since it's in the curriculums we're building, you know, might be a better articulation than something. I'm, not that I'm against remaining curious and thinking creatively. It's hard to measure. But it is within other pieces, you know, when you talk about analyzing, that's where you might be thinking creatively. And so, I'd like to think creatively about this, and I, I would, you know, uh, I personally would welcome, you know, talking with the subcommittee of the board. But in the end, I do, you know, this is really your work and the work of this community, because this is what, you know, our students should attain. And that's what.
Elizabeth, you bring up, you know, I think that there's a discussion also around, this won't be the last change that's gonna happen, so that kind of the gen one, the gen two. You know, gen three, we, as Dan said, you know, technology's gonna be, what's it gonna be five years from now? I think there should be a discussion around how we, how we do this, you know, how we do this work, right? Because, you know, also, I don't want with gen two, I don't want all the data that we collected, you know, there's got to be a natural evolution and a continued collection of our evidence. But that said, I do think we have to figure that, we have to figure this out, and perhaps this is on our calendar that comes up for, you know, we're on gen two. What, how are ends continuing to work? Is there any things that we need to be looking at? There's a, a review period of our, our ends. We don't really, we don't have that. That's maybe, maybe my issue, we should have put that on our calendar, that there's an annual review of ends, but, um, anyway. Well, you know, I mean, we are in, in, in and around, but we don't circle back to talk about the, the big, the big buckets, you know. But I, I think what I'm hearing is that board members could give feedback about this to a, a subcommittee of the board. That would work with Stuart and myself, at least just on the onset, within maybe some planning, taking the, that feedback and, and coming up with kind of some next steps. And whom to involve and how to go about doing that. That would be my kind of recommendation. I don't know who would come forward and volunteer to do that.
Do we have a couple volunteers for the subcommittee?
I could, I'd like to be part of that, um, after five o'clock. Yeah.
Diana, Julie?
Julie? Okay, great. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Great. All right, we'll move on to agenda, uh, number nine, uh, policy prevention of bullying of students. And this is the first reading?
Correct, it's a first reading. Um, again, this is one of our required, uh, policies, uh, that the agency requires us to have. Again, I think it's a first reading. I, I think we are a little bit behind in time right now. Perhaps board could have the opportunity to read it, ask questions, and we would bring it back for, you know, uh, uh, our next reading, the second reading. Unless, if there's specific comments or questions, and maybe if they want to be either quickly talked to or submitted.
I have two quick ones, I think. One may, maybe not as quick, but it, it, the bottom of the first page talks about. Uh, in order to be, no, in order to be bullying incidents such as the ones described above must be repeated over time. What does that mean, repeated over time?
It's not a one-time thing.
Yeah, I understand it's not a one-time thing, but over time, does that mean it has to go on for weeks? Does it have to be?
Over some period of time. How is that difficult?
I'm concerned, I, I mean, is that?
Happens today, happens tomorrow.
Is that, is that sufficient for the administration to understand? I mean, is there an understanding of when this is triggered? I mean, if, if some kid's been badgered for two weeks, is that sufficiently over time? And if we haven't done anything about it and there's a problem, are we liable? Or, you know, that, that's kind of where that.
Well, I think there's some due diligence in our part to say that if it happens once, you know, we're mindful of what's going on. And if it happens again, and again, in a reasonable period of time, we, we need to be on top of that. This is an extremely difficult area, I'm gonna tell you, that those of you who've been following the news and looking at, you know, kind of the cyber side of things. This is very difficult, and it's very difficult for us to track, and sometimes it goes across from the home to the, to the school and back home. Um, or wherever, and so. And so, you know, we, you know, this, this is a really tough area, particularly in the cyber side of things. This is a required policy, that we, we meet the guidelines on this, and I think that, um, it's hard to then nail it down to be specific to say if it's, if it just happens twice, then it's not, not an issue. I mean, you gotta look at the specifics of, of the situation, uh, the heightened anxiety around it, which might warrant, you know, further investigation into the situation. So, again, we're-
Yeah, I just was uncomfortable with such a ambiguous statement, but I, I don't know that there's any answer, I just was raising that.
And Martin, that is the language from the state that pieces all the time. Um, and, and it is because anything is still a disciplinary issue. If I call you a bad name once, I mean, the administration's supposed to deal with that. If it's a continual thing, I do it two, three times, and each time, eventually, you're supposed to say, oh, it's a pattern. You know, this is, the third time I've talked to you about doing this with this kid, this is not just discipline anymore because you said something nasty.
Right.
This is bullying.
Okay. I, I mean, if it's a workable, you don't see a downside risk or problems on, on, but if the state doesn't, then presumably doesn't. The, the other item I have is, is narrower, and that's where we have a list of protected classes, we could call it, in the second page, race, creed, color, national origin. I don't know, I don't think this matches up with the list of protected classes we have in our harassment policy, but it should. So if you could just, I think there might be one or two that are not here, I, I don't have-
It's just not all inclusive, you mean?
I don't think it includes, I mean, if we have it, if we have in our harassment policy that it's harassment if you are, are picking on these particular classes or, uh-
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I, but I think there's a couple that are missing.
And for us, and remember, it's also about, we have procedures that then are, you know, connected to this. And we have to, you know, we have the procedures that outline kind of the expectations that we have, so. Um, I did think hard and fast, I mean, one of, we have some of these transition policies that have been in our book for quite a long time. And so with Karen's help, looking at how these overlap, in other words, what area of under policy governance are they under? And then the procedure that should follow. So trying to be really methodical about how we go about doing this. This is a required policy and has to show on our books that it's there. Can't be under a policy governance umbrella, has to be on its own. So there's some, you know, trying to think, you know, thoughtfully about how we move this, move this forward.
So David, I was gonna bring this up under future agenda items, but there's, there's quite a bit of discussion amongst parents in the community about some of the social networking websites right now, especially after the really unfortunate death in Addison County. Um, so specifically related to sites like that ask.fm or whatever, and I'm just wondering, I, I think the board probably needs, I know I need to be educated about what our liability is in terms of that. I mean, and a lot of this, I think, happens on devices that parents put into kids' hands. So it's, I'm not sure where the line is, and I've been asked that about, well, what's schools responsible? I don't know the answer to that.
I, I think it's, I think it's good to have on here, I think there's a fair amount, I mean, it continues to be something that, you know, more applications, more manners, you know, more, more ways to do the, you know, the kind of the social networking and communication. I think we should put it on here, I think it should be part of our acceptable use kind of review. Um, obviously, we have some of the things are our devices, some of the things, some of these things happen in our school. We ought to understand kind of the social networking and what do we deem acceptable use. And maybe we need to communicate what that is, and we need to communicate it more globally to our parents. You've heard from, you know, our, um, technology folks about, you know, becoming more educated about laptops and having, and applications for their kids, and again, that's gone down. But maybe, you know, social networking and how to monitor, how to help, how to inform, how to help educate children about it is a needed area of training, uh, or whatever we wanna call it, you know? So.
Well, and I'm particularly looking at the back page and, and the fact that off-campus cyber bullying is included in here um, as of May two thousand and eleven.
Right.
Given that we put devices into student hands and they take them home, I don't know if we have any, you know, restrictions on access to some of the sites that have a lot of national disability right now, but, um, that would seem to be some exposure and, um, concern to the district.
Yeah, I wonder if we couldn't get, like, Officer Kevin to talk to us a little bit about some of that stuff?
Yep, or, or somebody just to talk about social network, and Burlington's gone through a lot, you know, uh, Chief Shirley's in some law work in this area, and so I, I think, I think, you know, we have, we will always have a lot to learn. We have definitely rendered some consequences regarding this, you know, for things that are happening on our devices. We've definitely rendered some consequences to students. Um, a lot of our equipment is probably not the biggest offender, it's sometimes the more portable devices around. This is what I'm understanding, is the, you know, the phones, you know, functionalities of the phones is usually where those things are happening most frequently, at least from what I understand. But I think it's appropriate to have it on there, let's just, let, let's have it as a placeholder and let me figure out how to, maybe get some more information to the board and, and to us around, around that.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item ten, um, consider protection of teachers under article fifteen point seven.
So this is, uh, part of the, uh, teacher's contract, um, is, as Elizabeth said, fifteen point seven, which is on there as an action, consider protection of teachers. And again, the, this is an annual event that happens. Um, the administrators have complied and provided me, you know, with information, but we've had a conversation. And at this time, um, we have chosen not to have anyone protected under this. Again, it's a provision of the contract, it's here for action. I think it's appropriate that it's in front of you, but I'm recommending that we take no action, and there's no names to be recommended to you tonight. Um, I think there may be some questions that some of you might have, but, um, I'm happy to go into more detail. Most likely, I think, at another time, maybe around, you know, rationale and thinking of that. It has been exercised in the past, and it could be in the future, but, um, at this time, I have, I have no recommendation for you.
Okay. So unless there's questions, we'll take no action.
Thank you.
And move on to setting the agenda for the November sixth meeting?
So we had one, I think, Martin, uh, the Form-based code, and I haven't looked, is it, if we made it back on there? Um, that was one we needed to add, so we gotta get to it. So safety zones, actually, safety zones are in there, so. We wanted to add that, right? It's not on there. Don't you think, Martin, we would wanna bring that back?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, but we would take it off if we can't get a meeting set up with Paul and, uh-
Correct, so we'll leave it as a placeholder.
On number nine, David, where it says enterprise services, or do we, does that mean the enterprise funds, like, schools out and nutrition? Or is there something else?
No, that, that is, those are the enterprise funds. Um, and perhaps it could be, obviously, you don't necessarily need to have the, uh, nutrition services, it just could be, uh, schools out kind of update.
And actually, we have another enterprise fund at the field.
Um, yeah.
What is it?
What's the, it's Turfield, right?
Oh, yeah, Monson Field, I was drawing it, too. The school store is a little one in the high school, too.
So we're just enough, so we'll give you schools out, Monson Field, and school store. But we'll, we will add safety zones on there somewhere, and, um, if we can't get it on, we'll take it off.
On the number eleven, the policy is who, who's on deck?
Elizabeth and I are on for two point eight.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's on for two point one.
Two point ten.
Hasn't been anybody who's worked in two point ten?
Oh, it's you, Stuart, sorry.
That would be me.
Okay.
I think it's every, everybody is doing two ten.
Yeah, we all read it, I think, right, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, yeah.
But you want someone?
No, no, it's not that I want somebody, I, I mean, all the curriculums are changing. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's not the same little chart, what we've done. I mean, we're in a different kind of mode, you know, six, twelve, 'cause it's Atlas kind of flows, but elementary, we're, you know, this, all we're doing is curriculum work, so I'll give you a report to that, but I can tell you right now, we're not in compliance.
Okay, all right, that's all right.
David, did you just say Martin and I are on that one?
Yeah, and Julie and Elizabeth on two eight.
So we're on that one?
Oh, great.
All right.
Oh, you are?
All right, we'll have a meeting.
Either that, or I just typed your names in here, and it just seems to be working just fine.
Just assigning.
Stuart wants to-
And is there anything we need to carry over from?
Yeah, let's look. That we put on?
Yeah.
Elizabeth, we'll need a tax note, consider a tax note, actions item.
All right.
Future agenda items?
We add, we add the, add the social networking info and that on, but-
Dare I say that we can remove calendar two point O right now, or do we have to keep it there? Because it could, it may come up again in a different-
Let's take it off.
I think you can take it off, I'm, I'm gonna keep you updated on kind of the initiatives that come out of that.
Is there anything, like, tuition students, is that, like, these, is there anything that we could take care of quickly? Like, are these, just to reduce our list?
You are really into the reduction of the list.
She just wants to do a little house cleaning.
She does, check off it.
I think I've been hanging around you too long. Hmm, 'cause when we add one, it would be nice to take one.
Well, some of them can be done, the crisis planning, uh, you know, I'm gonna have, I have an October meeting, and we'll have-
Maybe we need a retreat.
Some of them I can do through, you know, kind of brief updates, you know, if a crisis will happen. Noise at Chamberlain, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna have that one.
I think we've got a couple that'll be scheduled to come along.
Yeah, I think-
We'll use a trigger of if they make it to the list, we have to do a retreat. Okay, so we're set for the, um, November sixth meeting? Uh, so the next on our agenda, I think we've covered future agenda items as well. We're taking calendar two point O off. Consider the minutes of the meeting of October second. I know I had one minute that will be added, or has been added.
Yeah.
Any other comments on the October second meeting? By consensus, those are approved. Any questions on AP order number fourteen? All right, we'll shift into the board's self-evaluation, if people can fill that out.
We can do announcements if you want, we're just, at the same time, can I do that?
You wanna go ahead and, yeah, do announcements, David, while we're doing that?
Okay. Again, always, there's a lot to report, some of you know more about what's going on in, in kind of your own circles, but, um, I'll highlight a couple. Obviously, Thursday, October seventeenth, half-day at school, again, and the eighteenth, so we have testing, uh, that's going on, and no school on Friday, that is. Um, US hockey, and hockey players and Olympic hopefuls are gonna visit Central School, like, mark at Central School. Um, actually, I think they've done that already, um, to speak about importance of education and opportunities. The men's hockey team is gonna visit tomorrow, so they had, um, some today, some tomorrow, and kind of the same message. In addition, while we were at, um, Mr. Renazza's services, there was also an outstanding teacher day situation that went on. And on behalf of the board, I did sign board, um, and administration, and flowers went to both, uh, Amy Frostman and, um, George Cannon's wife, uh, for Outstanding Teacher Day at UVM. Stuart went, Harston, um, did, and did not go, but Mark and Patrick, uh, were in attendance. And that was kind of about the same time, kind of the four to, four to six kind of timeframe that that was happening at UVM. That's all I have.
I have one.
Oh, thanks, John.
I wanna thank everyone in the district, um, uh, the death of my brother. Um, my sister-in-law got a nice, um, contribution in his name to the Autism Society, and his, um, his grandson, he's autistic, and he had a big role in that little boy's life, so, uh, he'll be missed. But I thank everybody for your support.
All right, we'll give Martin a moment to collate our results.
People took a long time to do that.
Emotional night.
While he's doing that, um, is there an agenda for the steering committee meeting on Monday, I guess it is?
Yes, yes, there is, Dan. Um, I think it went out in the packet, but if not, um, we do have it, it is set.
Okay, it's coming our way?
It is set, and it, and we, it did not change. Well, you were not at the last board meeting, so, like, I mean, I'll get copies. You were not, right, at the last?
I was not at the last board meeting.
So we solidified that then, and, um, the council has also solidified it, so I'll get copies, make sure you get it out to the-
And, and are we confirmed for the twenty-first?
Yes, yeah.
Tell her. Elizabeth, she's on the line.
I think it's six o'clock, I'll find out.
At the city office?
Yes, city, 'cause it's not one of our meetings.
And one thing's we will discuss at that meeting is setting up longer meetings on a going-forward basis.
Okay. The, uh, the location is?
City office, city, somewhere in the city spaces.
Delana told me it was at the library.
Oh.
Let me just, let me just get you the, I'll get you the agenda, we, we moved it, they wanted to move it, actually, so that's, that's right. I'll get you the, let me get it right now.
Okay, so on, uh, the board meeting evaluation, uh, we agreed apparently on everything, except I'm not sure if you were agreeing or disagreeing, you're right on the line.
I disagree.
You disagreed, you disagreed with the board's focus and deliberations were in support of directional achievement of the ends policy?
Yes.
And there were, uh, three comments or disagrees on the item that I'd brought up, the board following the principles of policy governance focusing on establishing general expectations with appropriate limitations, uh, allowing administration to focus on the operation of details. But we already have in place something to, uh, try to assist with that in future board meetings. Uh, as far as the superintendent feedback from the meeting, there was a disagree, or there are, once again, those disagree or those on the line?
I guess I should be more specific, the, the second two are disagreements.
Okay, there are, there are a couple disagrees. Uh, in fact, uh, there's another one here as well. For the board, questions were first anticipated and second responded to in a thorough, timely manner, and presentation data and expert opinions reflecting various, varying perspectives of an issue which the board was asked to discuss. So, um, I would think that actually, though, in future, for those, it might be helpful if we can give examples, because I, actually, when I disagreed with one of these on here, I did put down kind of an example of why. So anyway, that's that.
We can do that. All right, I'll entertain a motion to move into adjourn and move into executive session to discuss a legal matter, personnel and collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining and legal.
Okay, legal matter and collective bargaining on the grounds it would be disadvantageous to discuss it in public?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where are we going?
Great.
Shift into executive session.